All right, Jack, are you ready? Okay, we're gonna start this forum. Jack, go ahead and take it.
I'd like to have these two of the translaters, please yourselves. John Verdyne as Jack. A former teacher, retired. How do you work with your students? And you are seeking your first class. I went to a decision. And you would come back to your board. You've been on the council for eight years, right? And you're looking for a volunteer. And you're a colleague. So, John, who you are and why you're doing this?
So, my name is John Verdyne. And as our moderator mentioned, I'm a retired teacher. And I currently work at Wesley Holmes in Des Moines. So, I have a lot of experience in the teaching area. And that brings me to run for the school board. I have also a business background. So, I think that would be helpful in dealing with the issues that are current in the Highline School District.
Are you gonna just keep talking about stuff? Or you will come back in a minute?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, and I'm Michael Spear. Currently on the board and have been here for eight years and with the support of the community. And I hope to see that happen again for another term. As Jack mentioned, I'm currently an instructor at the college level, at the Marin Technum College and Sales Central. But I do classes elsewhere when those opportunities come up. I've taught at a lower level for high school. And originally got my start while I was still in college doing some tutoring at Green Lake Elementary School. So, a long history in working with students at multiple levels and other youth that are in other situations. I previously, when I began on the board, I was the supervisor of a youth shelter in the Bellevue area.
When I was looking through the material today, I noticed that you made a comment about how we were happy in the eight years you've been on the board has stabilized its finances. And you're commenting that you don't like the finances going out in schools right now. First thing I kinda like to ask is the two failed bond issues. And they failed by a majority vote. They had to have, they fell short of sixty percent required. It seems to me, from an outsider's viewpoint, that the biggest problem was we weren't really communicating with the people who voted. Let's start with you.
Thank you for that. One of the things I would try and remind everybody, especially those watching at home, this was not a measure that we undertook lightly. When we originally found the need for a bond, we were in the middle of the recession and knew that we couldn't push something forward before the people because everybody was hurting and the ability to tax wasn't there. We also knew that we were building a bond on top of previous bond measures. So, this would be a new tax. And that was a difficulty as well. And we knew that that was a difficulty. So, we've been communicating with the community for over four years by the time the bonds finally came around. My mic is a little weird. So, it wasn't something that just came up in a short notice. But we've certainly heard from people in that it's not reached that sixty percent mark, that there's more to be done. And we need to look at something in order for that to be accepted and allowed that people are going to vote for.
So, there have been two failed bond issues. I think the first one was extravagant. And I think the second one was a better offering. I believe that a fiscally conservative bond is necessary and needed. I think the district has, in general, been lecturing voters instead of listening to them. So, I think that if the board can demonstrate that they will maintain buildings better and use money more wisely, that a bond issue can succeed.
I'd like to start with a question. Highline High School is in desperate need sometimes. We had someone for a bill of city council a while back that basically said they were afraid to go to the back. I guess I would like to ask how you can be fiscally conservative and pay for a problem like that?
So, as you report, Highline High School, the remodel of that high school did not work as well as it should have. I've taught summer school up there a couple of times. And it does need a lot of repairs. And the issue is that, like you say, the money to get that. And I think if the district can show that they will keep maintaining facilities instead of letting them run down, the Highline High School back area, you know, the education area is in bad shape.
So, the first thing I would argue is we need the schools that were put forth on the bond measure. DeWitt Elementary is the oldest building in our district and needs to be replaced. It's not an option. It also doesn't serve enough students. And we have extreme student growth through the district. Highland High School is in a similar situation where we can't just have the damage on a war wound anymore. It needs to be, it needs to be major renovation in order for it to be an appropriate school to serve the students and the staff and others that would be using that in the community capacity. At the same time, to try and make sure that we've got capacity, not just in the short term, but for the next 25 years, we need additional space. And that's why there were two middle schools that were put forward. There was very little beyond that that was added to the bond except for funds to make sure that we can maintain. Because unfortunately, the money that we get for maintenance of schools doesn't come from our general fund. Our general fund has been paying for staff and other points, utilities and things throughout the district. We don't have the money that we can take from that and put towards repairs without taking away from students in the classroom. So, that's always a difficulty. That's where the bond measure is what's been used in the past to rebuild up our capital facilities plan. I would also argue that for the dollars that we had, we've done a bang-up job maintaining and renovating the spaces that we have. It's been stretched, it's been used, it's been utilized to make sure that things are there. It's not enough to replace a boiler in every school or to tear up the pipes where we have a pipe burst at Sehurst. Sorry. So, that's true. It's just not something that we can draw upon, and those funds are running out.
I think, you know, part of the problem with passing a bond is that voters have seen schools deteriorate over time. And the feeling of the community is that money has not been spent wisely in maintaining facilities. I can just say from personal experience that I put in a request to have my classroom painted. And, you know, 15 years later, it still wasn't painted. So, sometimes it's little things that help. But, you know, this overall, you know, you mentioned boiler problems. There's all kinds of problems. And yes, these things need to be replaced. But maybe showing the community that we can pass a conservative bond issue and then show responsibility in maintaining the facilities that are built will encourage voters to have confidence to pass more bonds in the future.
What do you mean by conservative? How much less could they be asking for?
Well, I don't have exact figures. But I think that in the process of listening to the community, they can respond by passing a more conservative bond issue. And to be successful, they would have to be less thinking of the long-term issue and what's more needed immediately than prioritize those things.
Can I respond?
What I would offer is that in the immediacy, we need classrooms. And we don't have enough classrooms available for the students that we know are coming in the next 10 years. We have a demonstrator who's looked at the district for a number of years. And we've seen quite accurately from that person that we've got a growth in our system. We're going to continue to have growth. When people are moving in for new jobs in Amazon or Boeing or other places that are expanding, they're moving into the South East to get an access and find affordable housing. That means that we're going to have new students coming into the area. Given what it is now, we previously looked at the initiative, and it's probably changed. I mean, we could have a bigger classroom issue now than we had when we looked at the bond. We needed at least 180 classrooms in order for us to fit the students that we have at an appropriate level and make sure that they can all learn. That means new schools. It's not something that we can just rebuild where we are or simply patch up schools that we previously had. And I know that some people have looked in the area and said, "Well, you have some schools that aren't used." Unfortunately, there are rules and conditions that are set down by OSBI and the state and other entities that say which schools can be used and not all of them can be reopened or currently safely reopened without major renovation.
You have a bondlet issue coming up next year, I believe. Do you know what that's going to say now?
Right now, we haven't put something before voters. We don't plan to until we've done our due diligence and speak more with the people and try and figure out what's going to be an appropriate package. That's why recently, we have a new construction committee to look at growth in the area and try and help wrestle through what's appropriate and what we can put forward and what we can do as a community. We're also going to have a number of community meetings to try and figure out what is it that people are willing to go with and willing to part with in order for us to have an appropriate bond that people will vote for.
That's a good way to approach it.
I think that I've attended several different presentations of the board about this subject. And I don't doubt that more classrooms are needed. I'm sure that's true. Oftentimes, the district has been way off in their predictions about student growth. But I think that it's accurate to say that more classrooms are needed. And I hope that whoever's on the board will listen more to voters to try to pass a needed bond.
The charter schools opened up in the period. It is operating even though the state Supreme Court says they're illegal, but it's still operating. But what does the charter school drawing a number of students, I don't remember the number offhand, but quite a large number of students, what does that say about the Highline School District? Is it not providing for those? Or is it just kids that want to, parents just want to spread them out? What's the reason why a charter school is operating successfully? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
So, the schools that's come into the area, unfortunately, first of all, Highline is not an authorizer. We originally looked at authorization as an option so that we could review charter schools in the area and whether or not they were appropriate. That was one of the only options that we had. With the decision by the Supreme Court, the schools have been called into question. But at the same time, there are students that are already going to that school. And they need a home for the year. It's difficult for students to go for a month and then be told they can't. They don't have anywhere to go. And they would have to come back into the Highland School District if they don't have that school. That means 100 students roughly, that's how many are, you know, that are from the Highland School District. And I know some students are from other areas, not just the Highland area. As far as how is it operating or how is it successfully operating? Charter schools are able to do certain things that are not allowable in a public school. My argument's always been if it's good enough for charter schools, it should be good enough for a public school. At this time, I personally view charter schools as an experiment with our students and the community to see what options are available and where education should go in the future. Frankly, we know we need more hours, more contact with students. We need more options with students. In order for us to meet the Core 24 programs put forward by the state, we're gonna need more periods for our students in their schools so they can graduate with the classes they need. Because not every student gets a C on the first time through a class. And we want our students to do better than that and excel. So, right now, it's offering some options that some parents have chosen to take on outside of our school system.
So, I know Mr. Spear and I agree that, you know, the Supreme Court has ruled that charter schools are illegal currently in the state of Washington. And as a general statement, I'd like to say that I think many parents have bought into the idea that charter schools offer a better education. And I would argue that almost all charter schools have proven that to be wrong over time. So, there are a few charter schools that have been successful. But most have done poorly in relation to the public schools around them. So, I think some parents have been sold a bill of goods in relation to charter schools. And I think that public schools do a much better job.
One of the issues that comes up quite a bit and quite often are there are too many tests. And I know that the school board doesn't directly control that sort of thing. But you can certainly set the direction. Are there too many, are we teaching to tests and are there too many tests and taking away from the real learning of students on certain?
So, I offer, our communications department actually does a great infographic to look at. They've studied the problem and looked at where is our testing in the district and found that frankly, we really don't have as many tests. And last year, Alan Machani, who's our director of accountability, he looked at reforming some of our standardized testing to make sure that we weren't doing as many tests where we could try and hit students with one test instead of two and try and cut back on that. At the same time, we don't want to teach to a test, as you mentioned. It's not appropriate. It's not the standard you want is for a student to do well one time and have them pass. To that end, testing, though, helps teachers and others assess where your students are. So, you need to have some way of dipsticking and figuring out where a student is. It shouldn't be, they shouldn't be one-size-serves-all. They shouldn't be one-time offerings. And it shouldn't be something that taxes the students so they can't get their education done.
So, I'm an advocate of trying to eliminate as much testing as possible, except that for tests that are mandated for state graduation. I can say as a classroom teacher, a retired classroom teacher, that an inordinate amount of time is spent training students to take a test and teaching to the test. And there are often tests to prepare students for tests. So, I'll take your word for it that testing has gone down in time. But I believe that too much time is spent on teaching to the test and preparing for tests that takes away from learning. So, I would advocate less tests. And the other problem with tests is that, yes, they generate information. But the information is so overwhelming sometimes that teachers don't really have time. They don't have the ability to put into effect the programs that might be indicated by the test itself or the test results get there so much after the fact. So, some testing has a potential to help students. But in the current system and the current structure, time is being spent to get students prepared to pass a test, not to learn.
Question back there.
Well, I was, this is on the comment that you were talking about earlier about getting the ideas from the community and why, the feelings of the community. So, I wanted just to voice, throughout the years, I've been a teacher in the past. And throughout the years, I have always, always, always voted yes on a school bond issue until the last two bond issues. And the reason I didn't vote for them and the other people that I know of didn't vote for them were several. I know that we need help with the more buildings. I know we need more repair and preparation. I understand that. But what I don't understand is when I talk to other teachers, that the monies that have been allocated and according to teachers that I know, they say that the money has gone to more administration. It hasn't gone through maintenance. And then you made a big salary increase for the superintendent of schools. Excuse me. We don't have a known school district that isn't, I mean, people would rather go to, if they're moving into the neighborhood, they'd rather go to Normandy Park than because of the school district versus here in Highline or just this area just isn't. We just need to have something. I didn't want to say no to improvements of the school, but I didn't like the way and others didn't like the way the monies were handled. We didn't feel like the repairs were made that needed to be made. And that is why a group of us, obviously, voted no.
I'll tell you, that's valuable feedback. And it's valuable feedback because what I would offer again is, or what we've talked about before. First and foremost, the money that comes in for a bond, there's a lot of rules around what a district can do with money. And those monies are put into our capital facilities project. Our capital facilities project cannot be tapped for salaries. So, I couldn't offer someone a raise who's a janitor or who's a teacher or somewhere else in the system with funds from the capital facilities project. At the same time, though, when there is a new project, it's part of those funds and it's a very small portion of building a new building goes towards people like a construction manager. And those are people that we hire and at the time to run a project and make sure that they see it through. But those are the only administrative costs that come from it. And when I say it's valuable is because that's part of the miscommunication that was pushed forward by some to try and say that they didn't want the school bond. I'm not saying that that was, that that's what's going on. I'm sharing, I feel bad that bad information was passed on. At the same time, the supposed increase to the superintendent's salary, we have, I know I've heard this argument come up a few times. What it was is it was a reporting issue that said, "This is how much this person was increased," when in fact, there was no increase that year to the superintendent's salary. And that's something we've tried very hard to communicate out. But we keep having, we keep running into a wall where we can't put forward. As much as the district and the board of directors has tried to put forward factual information and say, "This is where things are," it hasn't been something that's pushed forward. So, I know that time and again, it's been touted that the superintendent was given a very large raise in 2014. And I'll say it again, it never happened. That wasn't something that happened. It was someone looked at the state reporting website, looked at what the amount was that was reported that year versus the year before, which at that time, it had included benefits and other things that are paid not just to her but for other superintendents throughout the state. And they saw that number and they said, "It went up by this much." And as much as we've tried to correct that, it has not been, has not followed through. So, I offer that as the answer and the solution. As far as, I mean, we know that there have been, there have been issues with trying to get the right repairs to the right schools. And it's difficult to repair every problem that comes forward. So, one of the things that happened in the last couple of years is that we have a new facilities director and a new program that plans what, it's supposed to try and respond to tickets. Kind of like what John mentioned earlier, there shouldn't be a school if it needs a paint job and a classroom that goes for 15 years. There's a new electronic program that should respond to tasks faster. At the same time, though, I know from board records down through facilities maintenance, there is a desire to see those issues and whether it gaps in the system, control and fix so that we can get better with those repairs where there are repairs that can happen that are within budget.
So, as I understood your question or your statement, you were saying two things. One is that you and others were inclined to not vote for the bond issue because of this perception of the misuse of money or the extravagant use of money, whatever you want to call it. And Mr. Spear is correct that the bond can only be used in certain areas. So, that is not directly reflected in somebody's salary or other administrative costs necessarily. But the community has a strong perception that the administrative costs are extravagant in relation to the size of the school district. And it's kind of like the Highline wants to be more than it is. I guess you could put it in that way. And so, you know, Normandy Park is part of the school system.
Yeah.
But you're right that certain people, you know, if they can afford it, want to live in that area as opposed to the area or some other area. But this overall perception of misspent money is one that is really, you know, causing a lot of friction about bond issues in general. And when you go to a board presentation in the community, they're telling us things instead of listening to the responses to people's issues that they have in relation to maintenance and past errors that have happened. And, you know, I salute the idea of a better system for repairs. I work for a company now that does repairs all the time. And it's obvious. And they do them rapidly. And so, I know that it's possible to have this situation under better circumstances.
Do we have any further questions?
What I would offer is that, well, John mentioned it's good to have a better system in place. And that's why I would say the system that we have is in response to the troubles over a period of time. I wouldn't say that we're rushing to catch up or that it's not there and that we're not listening. Constantly, the board is taking in information and we'll, we chat, we discuss, we try to say, "What's next? What are people talking about now?" We've been holding community meetings out. And from my last community meeting, I had a couple of things that came forward that I'm still trying to work on. Well, we work on these things and then we try to feed back. But I know one of the things that the board continues to struggle with is how do we make, how do we have a clear message? How do we continue to feed back to people that what you've brought to us and what's gone on is being worked on, the problems being solved? We're trying to get back to you with that information. And we'll reach out to people, but somebody might hear something, see something and say, "Well, that's still not the solution to the problem." And then it doesn't come to us. So, we don't know to act again or to try and check it again. Plan, do, review, and act. That's where in most project management, you're looking at the system and trying to figure out what's next. We plan, we do, we review, and then we'll act when people bring something forward. So, what I keep asking people for is the more you can bring to us, the more we know and the more we can try and take more steps in that direction.
It appears that one of the problems involved with this in the school district is communications. It's the great number of people out there, the voters, the school board, and the group of managers and facilitators and so on. Is there a way or is there a plan in effect to perhaps bring the two sides closer together so they can talk? The idea that people understand or think that the superintendent is paid from building funds is pretty obvious to people like me who follow these things. But it's not obvious to the public. So, you have a communications problem. I'd like to ask you what your plan are to fix it?
So, I know we've taken on a number of new measures to try and work on those communication measures. And what I would say is it takes time to reform a path where the communication falls down or where people feel that what they hear in rumor is more important than what they might hear directly from the source. One of the ways that I've offered that we can fix that is by having kind of an FAQ page with our website. I know that we're looking at some website revisions. And I would hope that that's something that comes forward where, when, just like we did with the bond, where there were questions that came up with the bond measure. And we would have responses to those questions on our own page. We would need to have those for additional issues that come up. So, when someone, if someone were to bring forward something like my-- So when someone, if someone were to bring forward something like, my child did not get an appropriate lunch in their school. I'm not saying that's a problem, but let's say that something comes forward or someone has that an issue. We can look into that and try and review and then put out the answer and say, here's what we found. We'll often do that at our board meetings, but we need a more permanent repertoire that says, this is what those answers were to those issues.
I think that some of the steps that have been taken are useful. I think the district still has this overall philosophy of telling the community what they should do as opposed to listening to the community. And I would say that if they reach out in a way in which people get to be heard as opposed to not listening to them, I think that would be very helpful. But it's been a long-term problem and it will take time to change. One of the things that I've noticed in my coverage of the cities in the area is the school district is pretty much in the last century when it comes to communications. You don't video or audio record your meetings so they're available to the public. You have to come to the school district headquarters in order to know their website. And not in my opinion, but in another opinion, that people will know how to look at things. Say, it's visible, hard to find anything on it. Most of the things you try to find aren't art on it. And in other words, there are some things you could do to be better understood to the public that appear not to be being done. I'd like to know maybe whether I'm wrong or not. Sure.
First check that I would offer, we do report our meetings. The audios are available and they're posted to the website with our minutes. So after any meeting is done, those are available. Our website, we break, I mean, we've, it was, it was great at its time when we switched to the new website from the old system. And now it needs current revisions to keep it up to date. Part of the problem that staff have with the current website is being able to maintain it in a rapid order. That was fine five years ago, but in today's world, if your website can't be maintained and switched immediately, then you have an error that sits for too long. I know we have some staff who, they are, and they are on top of, and make changes. I found a discrepancy with one of our pages and a policy not being posted right. Sent it to the superintendent's assistant, it was fixed the next day.
Yeah, but you're a board member.
True.
If I were a citizen, would I be heard?
I would offer that you are, and that the citizens in the district, when they bring an issue forward, they are heard. For instance, we're currently working on an issue with our dual-language program, which the school, district's strategic plan has moved to. There's some parents at one of the schools that are unhappy and would like to have an offering at their school, would like to have an offering at their school that is not part of the dual-language program. We're looking at that and trying to find what's the appropriate solution. If we move too quick and make a solution up, then we're not listening to people. We have to take in their input, figure out a plan of action, feedback, and see if that's okay before we go forward to what we're trying to do. So.
I find the district website difficult to navigate. And I have trouble finding things that I want to on there. But I think the communication problem goes beyond the website. And, you know, there are people that get their information from the website, but there's a lot of people out there that are not being reached in. You know, with more community meetings that are listening instead of lecturing, I think that would really help.
Any other comments, questions? Paul, okay, let's dig.
With the dropout rate being pretty much hits at the Highline School District, what as a school board member, do you see as your role to turn that situation on?
So one of the things that we can do is try and appropriate funds from the budget for dropout recovery programs. We do have a partnership with South West Youth and Family Services that run a successful program and bring in about 100 students every year. I want to say that those numbers are about 140 last year, but without looking at it correctly, I don't know the exact number. So it's looking at programs like that that we can empower and try and help bring students back in. We also have, Mike Sead is one of our principals and of our secondary programs, who's worked really hard at our dropout recovery and trying to make sure that students don't leave the system. At the same time, part of what we do is to make sure that the offerings are there that keep students in school. So that a student, for instance, you have a student who comes in and English is a second language. They go into middle school, they don't necessarily do well there, get to high school, and then they fail the first three classes in the first quarter. That's a problem. Last year, one of the things we did is we authorized the superintendent to put more work towards our freshman class and make sure that they monitored, tracked, made sure that students were able to make and recover those grades where appropriate. Part of what we do is we keep looking at the system and making those changes based on the data so that we have, we don't have as many dropouts. That's where, last year, we saw 70% of graduation. I would offer that as a result of actions that were taken by the board and the implementation of the strategic plan and the methods that go behind making that strategic plan in action.
So in my experience, Mr. Spear is correct to say that often the problem develops with freshmen and sophomores in high school. For whatever reason, and there's many of them, students don't take the process too seriously at the beginning. They get behind and they're in a, and they're not feeling supported or they have other issues that come up, pregnancy, whatever. And so, you know, offering summer school just for those students that are at risk is, I think, a good idea. I've seen students who were in this situation that were able to pull themselves back together and get themselves on track to get the units they needed to graduate. Often times, even then, summer school, teachers would have to put in extra time to get students to be able to make up hours they might have missed for, you know, medical appointments, whatever it was. And so if the whole district is willing to go that extra mile, I think that the graduation rate can be raised. And many of the programs that you mentioned are good ideas. And I think there are other ideas that could help that increase. And especially educating students about the importance of graduation when they're freshmen and sophomores in high school would be a great idea.
So I am a teacher. And at some point in time, I was a teacher and administrator in the Highline School District. So I know the district well. During the last, when you first started the bond, okay? I went to some of the first organizational meetings for Highline Citizens for Schools. You had a new superintendent who was adamant that she was going to bring in her people from the outside without really knowing this community. And those people would then organize this bond and decide what was best for the community without really listening to student voices and to citizen voices. For example, I sat at some of the first meetings and we said, don't do this. It is not going to work with this community. Whatever you do, don't do that. This is too expansive of a thing to put through for this community. In spite of that fact, Superintendent Enfield and her man, Mr. Duncan, and I don't think I know his last name, insisted they would run an expanded bond in spite of what we told them to do. And as a result of it, it failed. We told them it was going to fail, and sure enough, it failed. There are other things that I think have happened also without thoughtful communication with the citizens, such as the rapid expansion of full-time kindergartens without looking at what it was, what the impact it would have on your facilities, because it did have an impact on your facilities. The other thing is, citizens weren't asked, certainly in the North End, whether they wanted to get rid of a comprehensive high school. They were just told they were going to go to the small schools model. So many of those families have left the district in the sense of sending their kids some other place because there is not a comprehensive high school up there. Communication is an issue. I don't know how you carry that issue back to the superintendent. But the board needs to come up with a solid plan. And I'd like to know what you've worked on as your particular plan to get that input from the citizens to the superintendent. So what is that plan?
So first, as I mentioned, there's the plan this year and our going forward because it's not just for the year. Part of what we've done, we have a new committee to try and look at buildings in the district and what's going to be put forward with the bond leadership. We're going to have a number more community meetings to try and meet people. And I'm sure that we'll do other things that we did before the last one was put forward. We had a survey that respectfully said we could support and that people came forward and said we could support the bond at the level that it was. Almost 74% of people in that survey voted, voted and said that this is what they would do. If we ran it that day, the bond probably would have passed. I can't say that for certain, but I'm saying that's, that's what we looked at and that's what we had to go forward with. At the same time, I respect your point, it's, you're saying it's, we can't do this. And I guess I would ask, I'd ask more, I'd wonder why. What is it specifically that was in the bond or that would be in a bond that wouldn't be something that we can move forward? That's what we're trying to find out, trying to figure out so we can have an appropriate bond package that people will vote for. To the point of all-day kindergarten, I know it's not directly related, but what I would offer is, through study and where things have gone through the country, that is one of the initiatives that has needed to happen probably for 20 years. It's not something that impacted our facilities so greatly that we've run out of room. We would have been room shy even with it. That was where it was, one of the points that was looked at when we were looking at all-day kindergarten. The rooms that were already being used for kindergarten were there. It was just that the students would be coming all day instead of it being that they only go for half a day. I know that there could be some increase, but not to a such as degree that would be an issue. And it's the right thing to do because you need to have those students prepared for first grade and beyond, and they were able to get more contact there. That's where we've seen monumental growth in our kindergarteners coming in and then moving into first grade. Most of them we've ever seen in the past. To your, to your last point about Evergreen High School or the small schools in general, I would respectfully say that's something that was, that was looked at at the school level and the schools voted to move to the small school model. Whether that's still the right issue is something that the board has taken on and that we're discussing with the community to try and see what is our next step. And there are options that are available. And we need to look at what's going to work best for students so they can get a rigorous education, not just at those campuses, especially if they stay small schools. That's where we've tried to put forward some AP classes and some other offerings to make sure that they continue to offer an appropriate education to students that are still going there because you have to do something before you can, before the change comes. But what's going to be the next step and the next phase in the district to make sure that students are able to get an appropriate education, not just there, but everywhere? Every school should give a student quality education. And I would offer that at Evergreen and some of the schools, much better than others, but it's going to get better. Those students are receiving a high-class education.
So I'm going to start with the point you made about the superintendent and the bond issue. So I think that the superintendent received a shock when that first bond issue did not pass. And I think that the shock became double when the second one did pass. And I could have misunderstood what she was saying or I could have misunderstood what her intent. But the, I heard her blaming the voters. I heard her say, you know, more or less that, and this is not a direct quote, but it was just a feeling that she was saying that the community was too cheap to pass a bond issue. And I don't think that was true at all. I think it had to do with the nature of the bond issue and the way it was presented and the way that it was expected to be passed without listening to people. So has the superintendent and her staff learned? I don't know. But if they do learn and they do listen, I think that a bond issue could be passed. So it's not directly connected to a particular philosophy except for listening and not dictating to voters or not getting the experience of the community because, you know, a lot of people in here have been successful in working for bonds and they know how to get that accomplished. As far as, and the second issue I'd like to address is the whole issue of a comprehensive high school at Evergreen. I think that it's more complicated, that, you know, outside money was involved in the change of structure at Evergreen. I believe that it has narrowed students' choices and possibilities. I think it's very detrimental to students. I think that, you know, across the nation, that we need to, you know, advocate for more comprehensive schools and make sure they're including lots of different programs and choices beyond, you know, the structure where you don't have any choice in what you take at class. So I think that the lack of a comprehensive program has driven parents out of the district, as you mentioned, and also to other nearby schools, districts, or. And so we have lost good students as a consequence. And, you know, the board seems to be oblivious. You know, they're not aware that parents have options besides just say, oh, well, I live here, so, you know, my kid's got to go to this particular school. There's plenty of options for parents besides that. And so, number one, I think the superintendent might learn from her experience and I hope that's the case. And I think that Evergreen in particular needs to return to a more comprehensive education.
Okay, one final question.
I'd like to ask about the strategic plan. It's playing out to be extremely expensive. We are not a wealthy district. We have to go to Thomas Corr, which costs a ton of money. We have to do Core 24, which is going to cost a lot of money. We have the principal's teacher evaluation system, which costs a lot of money. We not only have to refill Piedmont, we have to refill Evergreen and Piedmont. We have a lot to be asked. You have a strategic plan that has no limits on. I had first come to a meeting and asked if you guys would do a budget with it. And you had told me no because it's important to spend the money on the kids. And you are spending millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. There are 11,000 Chromebooks on the bond, for example. If you got that bond, Michael, would you look at the strategic plan? And John, would you change the strategic plan if you got it?
So first, my offer, and maybe we've talked about this before, and I would try and offer it again. The work in the strategic plan is the work of the district and the costs that go behind the strategic plan are the costs of the district and what the district does. Does that mean that it's 100% set in stone, that you steer with it and you just go with it? No, that's not the idea of having a living strategic plan. You have to look at it, review it, and make changes to that. So with every annual budget, we're looking at it and saying, what do we put funds towards in order for us to meet goals and push goals? That's why we have higher regulation rates now than we have for the last three years. And that's a very important point in looking at with the strategic plan, how do we get there? And if we keep pushing on that, how do we have a 95% regulation rate for the whole district? That's the goal of the strategic plan or one of the six goals of the strategic plan. The other goal is feeding that. We need to see that through. And it's, it's one of those things where you don't want to put money towards things that shouldn't happen. For instance, should we have, I mean, Chromebooks aren't specifically what's called out, but should we have technology as an aspect of the bond? Again, something that will need to be discussed. I don't know if that's necessarily something that everybody has a palette for, and it might be something that we need to change. But you don't look at a strategic plan and say that we're going to choose not to do something like getting to 95% graduation rate. So I'm going to ask, in what way has something been misspent? And in what way would it need to be changed? That's the, that's the piece that I want to know about. And if there's something there that we need to look at, then that's what we can change. But it's not something where I can just look at the entire strategic plan and say that the work of the strategic plan, having a shifting kindergarten, trying to go through a class size reduction from one to three, which is something we know as a society, it's been studied. been studied, is something that makes students more successful. We know that their focus in school to grade three is what makes them graduate by the time they get out, that if they're successful by grade three, they're much more likely to graduate from our system. We can't look at that and say, we're going to take money away from it just, just to do, to do that. So, I need something much more specific in order for me to act, and I'm willing to act.
You know, the, part of this problem, and everybody in this room, I think, would agree, is that the legislature needs to figure out a better system for financing schools, and they're working on it, but they need to be pressured and pressured and pressured in order to respond to that. So, you mentioned the Chrome tablets, but they were the kind of extravagance that this particular school district can't afford at this time. And the other part of that situation was that there was no money there to maintain them, or, you know, technology breaks down, there was no money for repairs, all these different things that are behind the scenes of the upfront cost. And so, that's what I'm referring to in relation to, you know, having a conservative bond issue, because voters need to gain confidence that the district will spend money wisely.
Okay, thank you. I think you've got some information, and we should do this again sometime. Thanks very much. Bye.